Evening and welcome to the final State Energy Plan Planning Board hearing on the draft State Energy Plan. My name is Nora Madonick and I lead Arch Street Communications, a firm assisting the State Energy Planning Board with these managing these hearings. I'm going to start with a few housekeeping items. While you are welcome to listen to the hearing via phone dial in. The technology will not allow comments made via phone only connections. If you're registered to comment and you're using a phone, please sign off. And then rejoin the hearing using the link you were provided at registration. We have a variety of non-English language support available at this hearing. To enable live Spanish language translation. Please click the Spanish icon says E S on your monitor. You can enlarge that as you wish. American Sign Language interpreters will be spotlighted at the top of your screen throughout the hearing. You can maximize the ASL interpretation window as well. For other languages. Please click on the CC icon on your monitor. It's circled on this slide. That's for closed captioning. And you can pull down a menu. And choose the language of your preference. In all cases, please use the QA function to request assistance. We have a staff that is ready to help you should you have any challenges in. Attending or participating in this meeting. Now I'm going to turn the floor over to. Doreen Harris, Chair of the State Energy Planning Board to open the hearing. Chair Harris.
Yes, thank you, Nora. I'm Doreen Harris, Chair of the State Energy Planning Board and President and CEO of the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. I'm pleased to be here this evening to conclude our hearings for the draft State Energy Plan. So thank you to all who have joined us virtually this evening. Again, the draft State Energy Plan was approved by the State Energy Planning Board for release on July 23, 2025. We're here to receive comments on that draft and I'm joined by a number of members of the State Energy Planning Board. Here this evening and you'll hear from them in just a moment. This hearing is being recorded and professionally transcribed as part of the official record. The recording and transcript will be posted to the State Energy Plan website shortly after the hearing. With me are several members of the State Energy Planning Board, which directs the development of this plan. I'll ask each board member to introduce themselves in turn. May I first hear from Commissioner Lefton of the Department of Environmental Conservation, please?
Good evening, everyone. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be here today to hear the comments on the New York State Energy Planning Board. I very much look forward to hearing the comments of those participating in today's hearing and we'll pass it back to Doreen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to hear from Commissioner McDonald of the Department of Health.
Hi, thank you. It's Dr. Jim McDonald, Commissioner, New York State Department of Health. I'm. Very thankful to be here tonight. Really have enjoyed the past hearings, hearing all the comments. I think they're very important. And so I just thank people for coming and thank you for participating in your government.
Thank you. Next is SUNY Chancellor, Dr. John King.
Thanks, Chair Harris. Thank you all for participating in this evening's conversation. We are looking forward to your input on the State Energy Plan.
Thank you. And President and CEO of the New York Independent System Operator, Rich Dewey.
Thank you, Chair Harris. I'm Rich Dewey. I'm the President of the New York Independent System Operator. We run the power grid for the state of New York. I appreciate everyone taking the time. To share their thoughts and opinions on this plan and I look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, the State Energy Planning Board has been hard at work for well over a year to reach this point and I'm pleased to be joined by these members, but I do want to reflect on the fact that all members have been involved. Over this period of time and certainly as we seek to finalize this plan. So I'll begin this evening by providing some background on the State Energy Plan and opportunities to provide input on the draft plan. Then Carl Moss, Senior Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research at NYSERTA will present an overview of the draft State Energy Plan. And afterward, we will talk through hearing logistics, including how you can comment this evening. All told, these introductions should require no more than 15 minutes such that we are able to present, utilize most of this time to hear from you. I'll transition now to background on the State Energy Plan. The State Energy Plan provides broad policy direction that guides energy-related decision-making within New York State. And it includes an outlook through 2040 with recommendations for meeting future energy demands that prioritize an energy system that is reliable, clean, and affordable while supporting economic development. Equity and a healthy environment. And it certainly does build on New York's significant progress toward realizing a clean energy economy, including the projects that you see reflected here among many. The State Energy Planning Board released a draft State Energy Plan on July 23, 2025. And we do encourage New Yorkers to review and provide their input through written comments or at public hearings like this one this evening. Public input received in response will be used by the board to develop the final State Energy Plan, which is anticipated to be published by year end. As you see here, this is the last of the 10 hearings the board is hosting. We will be accepting written comments through October 6, 2025. To provide further insight into the draft plan, I'd like to introduce Carl Moss, NYSERTA's Senior Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research. To walk us through the draft plan's broad planning goals. Thank you, Carl.
Oh, thank you, Chair Harris, and thank you all for joining us today to share your thoughts with the Energy Planning Board. As Chair Harris noted, the State Energy Plan serves as an opportunity to take stock of our progress. Calibrate the state's energy projections considering economic and political conditions and focus our vision on the 15 years ahead. I'll begin by orienting you all to the draft plan. Draft Plan Release for Public Comment consists of two volumes, as you can see on this slide. Volume one is the summary. It provides an overview for energy system today. Broad planning goals and summarizes findings and recommendations from subsequent planned chapters in volume two. Volume two consists of the topical and analytic chapters. We have also developed and released six fact sheets on key planned topics. All are available on the State Energy Plan website and we'll be dropping links to those in the chat if you haven't seen them. So our approach to this plan has been to focus on the following five overarching goals. First, to ensure reliable, resilient, and clean energy system. Second, to ensure energy affordability and equitable access for all New Yorkers. Third, to drive economic growth. Fourth, to advance energy technology innovation. And fifth, to continue progress on economy-wide decarbonization. I'd like to spend a little time talking through each of these. The first goal, the State Energy Plan puts forth policy considerations. To ensure that our energy system can deliver abundant, reliable, resilient, and clean energy for New Yorkers. We will achieve this by maintaining a diverse mix of both supply resources and infrastructure. Diversity in our energy resources allows the state to meet our energy needs while minimizing the potential impacts of energy supply disruptions and price fluctuations in any given market. Substantial investment will be needed to modernize aging infrastructure, address hazards, and support economic development. And this is true for every energy pathway that New York could walk down. I also would like to note that we are in a time of great uncertainty in the energy sector. The analytic modeling conducted for State Energy Plan reflects multiple scenarios to provide insights on a range of possible outcomes. Our second goal, the plan considers affordable energy and affordable access to bill-reducing energy efficiency. And clean energy choices as essential for an equitable energy transition and to New York's continued prosperity, advancing community and economic development. Even as we know that the average New Yorker spends less on combined transportation and household energy expenses than the average American, as shown in this chart. We know that we need to continue to focus on further progress in energy affordability. And advancing equity in our energy and climate actions means that New York is working to ensure that all communities. And especially people in disadvantaged communities will benefit from the state's clean energy transition. I note that federal policy and financial support have been critical to energy affordability in the past. We therefore will need to continue to assess the evolution in federal policies over time and understand how they can impact our projections over the next 15 years. Our third goal, we consider access to reliable and affordable energy, which is essential to attract and develop new strategic industries to New York, as well as to maintain existing industry. Digital industries like semiconductors and agribusiness have large energy needs and require access to reliable. Affordable energy and long-term energy cost stabilization. As such, New York can promote economic development by meeting the needs of large energy users and investing in infrastructure and programs that can attract new industry, including clean energy leaders. Our fourth goal is innovation. We see the advancement of energy innovation as a critical tool to enable New York's energy transition. Innovation can help reduce the cost of and increase the diversity of energy technologies and services. Whether by investing in emerging technologies in New York or by bringing existing technologies from outside the state to our markets. And finally, clean energy phases particular external headwinds from both economic pressures and a shift in the federal government's priorities. Continued progress toward decarbonization and the clean energy economy requires a sustainable financial footing, further policy actions, and new technologies. As the federal context continues to shift, the Energy Planning Board stresses the need to be clear-eyed about what timeframes are realistic. And with that, I'll turn the mic back to Nora. And again, thank you all for joining. I look forward to hearing all of your comments.
Thank you, Carl. I think we don't have elected officials with us tonight, so I'm going to go straight to the hearing logistics and we'll talk about how we how we will conduct receiving comments. As Chair Harris said, all the input that we hear tonight will be entered into the official record. It'll be reviewed during the development of the final plan alongside any written comments that are received. This hearing is being webcast, recorded, and transcribed as part of the official record. While you are welcome to listen to the hearing via phone dial-in. This is a reminder that the technology will not allow comments made via phone only connections. So if you wish to comment, if you're registered to comment, you'll need to sign off of the hearing and then rejoin using the webinar link that you were provided at registration. Please note, the purpose of this hearing is to hear from the public. It is not an interactive discussion. No comments or questions will be addressed tonight. We'll hear a diversity of viewpoints from commenters and we encourage you to please listen respectfully to all points of view. All comments and questions from registered commenters will be received and entered into the public record, but will not be responded to during this hearing. Commenters will each have up to two minutes to speak. Those using an interpreter will have an additional minute. This hearing is being recorded and transcribed for the official record. We're going to start with our pre-registered commenters and they'll be called on in the order in which they register. If you are not pre-registered, we will then be addressing, once we've finished with the registered commenters, we'll be moving on to those who registered today. And we will go through as many of those as we can. If you're pre-registered, please wait for your name to be called and you'll unmute when you're invited. We are going to be listing the commenters in groups of five in the chat. So that you can prepare and know when your time is coming up to speak. If you're not pre-registered, but you'd like to comment, if you've decided you'd like to comment. Please enter your name, your email, and organization you represent, if that's applicable. And any need for interpretation support directly into the Q and A. So as a reminder, you're going to hear from the, you're going to receive a message from the host. That the host would like you to speak. You'll unmute. And you'll have an opportunity to share your comment. If you don't respond, we're going to skip. We have many, many commenters tonight. So if you don't respond to that, we'll skip you, but don't worry, we'll return to see if. If you've become available a little bit later. If you can't finish your comment within the two-minute timeframe, we encourage you to submit your comment in writing. Using a method that will be shown on the screen. You're also going to receive from our team a private. Comment via chat. That lets you know when you have 30 seconds of speaking time remaining so that you have a chance to wrap it up. The chat function is otherwise disabled for this hearing. If you have technical difficulties of any kind, please enter that into the Q and A. We have people who are monitoring the Q and A. And we'll be happy to help you troubleshoot whatever problems may be happening with the technology. Okay. So let's get started. We'd like to hear from Roger Caiza. Roger, when you're invited to unmute, you certainly can.
Thank you. My name is Roger Caiza. Documentation for these comments has been posted on my Pragmatic Environmentalist of New York blog. The draft energy plan must reflect the reality of natural gas attributes. New York's obsession with eliminating natural gas is irrational. Concerns about the higher observed global warming potential of methane molecules compared to carbon dioxide. Drive the rationale to control natural gas. However, lab measurements ignore the fact that in the atmosphere, changes in methane concentrations have negligible climate impacts compared to CO2. The draft energy plan must recognize the residential reliability benefits of natural gas. I've lived in my home for over 40 years. I've never had an outage of natural gas service. There have been many minor electric outages and two multi-day blackouts. We survived the long blackouts because we had natural gas for heating and cooking. Natural gas provides a safety net. NYSERTA's recently released GE Grid Performance Gap Study. States that New York needs approximately 25 gigawatts of capacity by 2040 to replace the fossil fuel fleet. The draft energy plan must acknowledge that in-kind alternative generating resources simply will not be available by 2040. Not so long ago, the idea that natural gas could be used as a bridge resource until renewable and energy storage technologies could be tested at the scale needed. Provide proven ancillary grid services and generate dispatchable power at a similar cost was generally accepted as a rational approach. The draft energy plan must go back to that concept. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We're now going to invite Sarah Alsherif. Sarah, oh, Sarah's not with us. All right, we'll return to Sarah a little bit later. Beth Jacobs. Understand Beth may not be with us. We'll return to Beth a little bit later. And do want to say to anyone who is registered to speak, you may want to check on the chat to see when you are, when your time is up. Jerome Tyler DeVries. Al Bauer.
Yes. Dear Chair Doreen Harris and other members. We were hopeful when the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act was passed for all New Yorkers. Our Westin New York Rural Farm installed an effective solar array with incentives for net metering. The current draft State Energy Plan largely endorses. A status quo actions that leave New York far off track from the CLCPA goals. Drought this year, for example, has reduced our growing seasons tremendously and irrigation wasn't possible. The informed by experts 2022 scoping plan mapped out concrete actions, but the State Energy Plan ignored them and this may be unlawful. We need clear and specific incentives and steps. The state. The draft State Energy Plan has no mechanism for funding the clean energy transition such as a cap and invest program. That would lower electricity bills and support electrification with renewable sources. Dragging on incentives, our town, for example, amongst others, has passed local laws banning solar farms. Now, the federal government is aggressively undermining state's climate and clean energy efforts. New York must stand strong. The State Energy Plan must reflect a net zero A goal. As for example, in building electrification to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We don't need the vague additional action that ignores the CLCPA and the global climate threat to New York. I am also concerned that the new cryptocurrency mining, data centers, AI training, and semiconducting manufacturing are being prioritized over the actual needs. For reliable and renewable power for all New Yorkers, particularly lower.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time has expired. Would you please consider submitting your comment in writing?
I will.
Great, great. I'm going to move on to Denise Katzman. Denise Katzman. If you're not able to unmute or if you're having difficulty, Denise, if you just tell us in the. Q and A, we'd be happy to to help, but I'm going to move on and then we'll come back to you. Philip Rose. F. Scott Sikora. Jennifer Voight.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer and I'm from East Northport, New York. I'm a volunteer with the Long Island Sierra Club. I feel lucky to live on a coastal community and spending time on Long Island's beautiful beaches and parks. Like most residents of New York, my family and neighbors have experienced severe weather events resulting from global warming. We have lived through extended power outages and property damage from Superstorm Sandy. We've experienced flooded streets from heavy rainfalls and have seen extreme storms destroy roads and dams at favorite parks. Recent summers have brought air quality alerts due to heat and wildfire smoke that have limited access to safe outdoor activity. As a nurse, the health risks of severe weather concern me. In my work, I have seen stress and care interruptions from severe weather impact people's health and well-being. Climate warming is an urgent problem and our health and communities are at risk. We have the solutions we need to take action to protect the planet. New York must stay committed to the legally binding goals of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. And embrace its role as a leader in decreasing greenhouse gas emissions. Long Islanders support renewable energy. We are proud of the success of South Fork Wind and we look forward to the completion of Sunrise and Empire Wind, appreciating the green jobs they provide. And looking forward to their future contributions in meeting our state's growing energy needs. Expansion of gas infrastructure and pipelines is in conflict with the state's climate law. And will burden our future with ties to expensive, polluting fossil fuels. I am asking the state to adhere to the Climate Leadership Act and support renewable energy and upgrades to our energy transmission and storage grid. We all want clean air, a healthy future for our children, and a thriving planet. Turning away from our reliance on fossil fuels and committing to renewable energy is the path to this future.
Thank you for your comment. Move on to Anne Sweets Sweetsney. Jeff Schuman.
Hello, my name is Jeff Schuman. I'm in Croton on Hudson. I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the draft State Energy Plan. I must say, though, that on the whole, the plan is a great disappointment. It does not have the bold decisive action that is needed to address. Both New York's energy crisis and the climate crisis we are experiencing. It is empty of the bold leadership and vision that is needed at this time. It seems to be more business as usual. To begin with, the plan does not meet the statutory compliance of the CLCPA. The plan must take into account the recommendations from the scoping plan. It ignores these recommendations, even though by statute it is supposed to account for them. The plan is weak when it comes to addressing the increasing demand for electricity that we know is coming. The plan needs to encompass more renewable energy and energy storage solutions with firm capacity targets and deadlines for each. In conjunction with this, there needs to be more of an emphasis on ways to reduce the demand for electricity. Options for regulations for regulating, limiting the demand of data centers should be addressed in the plan. Additionally, proof-of-work crypto mining operations should be banned. We know that there are costs associated with the bold actions needed, yet the plan lacks options for funding the work that needs to be done. These funding options, though, must protect both tax and ratepayers from increasing cost. Embracing cap and invest is such an option for this. A final note, nuclear reactors are not viable and need to be eliminated from the plan. Thank you.
Your comment. Thomas Goodfellow.
Hi, my name is Thomas Goodfellow and I'm retired CPA living in the Albany area. And I've been involved with environmental issues for a while now. I, in particular, I was there when the assembly, the day the assembly passed the Climate Act. So it's very important to me. And I think it's very, very important that the plan follow the scoping document and the act. And if there are fundamental changes that need to be made, they need to go back to the legislature. The, I have two comments. Private companies should pay for the cost of new electric facilities needed for. Bitcoin and AI operations. Ratepayers should not be expected to pay for private development to make billionaires even more wealthy. Read the Bloomberg article on the Bloomberg website today. And that has more background on that. Many middle-class and poor people channel cannot afford to pay for this. If we must help them out, let it be through photo approved bond issues or government grants. And to pay off proceeds once the projects have become operational. There is no time for, my second point, there is no time for delay. We remove gas and coal from our energy stream immediately. Nuclear is an expensive. And risky alternative and should be avoided. Solar, hydro, and wind power are the least expensive. And most sustainable sources of energy and those sources should be pursued. I just want to say I've had an EV since 22. I've had a solar battery system since 23. I'm now considering going into a VPP, a virtual power plant. To help my battery, to allow my battery to support the electrical grid in times of a surge. And you know, they're just, it's, it's really a remarkable experience to me. I drive my car on solar power and. Thank you.
Mr. Goodfellow, we're going to move on. Peggy Kurtz.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear? Okay. Okay, my name is Peggy Kurtz. I'm a member of the Executive Committee for the Hope Laura Hudson Group of Sierra Club. I worked for five years for an innovative renewable energy initiative. And was appointed to the Rockland County Climate Smart Communities Task Force. But most important to me, I speak as a mother and grandmother, we are passing on a terrible legacy to our children and grandchildren. With this draft's energy plan, the state seems to be abandoning implementation. Of the climate law and the climate, the Climate Action Council scoping plan. Most problematic, the draft plan contains no mechanism for funding the clean energy transition, which is obviously essential to achieving climate goals. One of the key mechanisms for funding the transition was supposed to be cap and invest. Years of work went into developing this proposal, which has now been pulled back. This plan would have helped to keep bills affordable and help us to support electrification, which is so essential to clean energy transition. We also need the draft plan to include a sector-specific emissions reduction target for buildings. Without this, it's like we're trying to navigate without a compass. We need to know what the, what the benchmarks are. We also need to, I also want to agree with the previous, the comments, I believe it was Jeff Schuman about the cryptocurrency. The public should not be paying for the costs of this. And even if they built, we should not in any way be be paying for either the financial or the, or the environmental cost for these, these projects. We also need to amend the obligation to serve gas. State law currently dictates the type of energy that companies are obligated to offer. Ratepayers, gas, electric, or steam. The obligation to serve instead needs to say the company must serve safe, reliable, affordable energy, but does not mention the type of energy. Without removing gas from the obligation to serve networks like thermal energy networks and heat pumps will continue to suffer slow adoption because of an unfair market. With the federal government's.
Thank you, Ms. Kurtz. I appreciate, we appreciate your comment. Please submit the rest of your comment in writing if you'd like to. I'm going to move on to Mary Fineran. Ms. Fineran.
Hi, my name is Mary Fineran. I'm representing myself, although I'm a member of many different groups. I, I did speak before in Albany. And I want to underline one thing I said there. We have to, renewables are mandated. We must work more on renewables. We also have to be more creative on how we are using renewables, geothermal, hydropower. They're talking about reopening nuclear plants. We need to reopen hydroelectric plants and mandate that they are used for the people and not for things like cryptocurrency. I agree with other people. That should be banned out of New York state. Always, just to, just yesterday, I got a notice from the Audubon Society at asking ORIS, the Office for Renewable Energy Siting, to not, to be careful of the Fort Edward Grasslands Important Bird Area. I am totally for solar fields. I need, we need to, and I'm underlining what I said before, we need to do, ORIS needs to cover more of industrial lands. You know, brownfields, parking lots, like, and I'm underlining this because I haven't heard anybody else repeat this. France has mandated that parking lots over a certain size have solar fields installed. They will not only work for this, but they will cool the cars, which, which reflect heat. To go to things that reflect heat. Let me go into nuclear a little bit here. I'm being very scared. I didn't write. I'm using old notes. But nuclear, not only does it, it is not clean, it is not green, and it is the most expensive form of energy. But it also, the nuclear heat that is produced, the heat when they are in production, it heats the water and heats the air and beyond CO2 emissions. It's this actual heat that is, is adding to climate. It is not zero emissions. It is not carbon free. And the main thing with nuclear, which everybody just kind of shrugs, well, we don't know, is the waste. People are not working on the nuclear waste. They, the canisters.
I want to thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. And if you'd like to submit the rest.
I will be submitting more. Thank you so much. And I'm sorry I was scared. Thank you.
Hamanshu Ahuja.
Cynthia Frederick is next.
I'm sorry, Cynthia Frederick.
I'm here. Cynthia Frederick in Albany. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this draft state energy plan. Unfortunately, I find that this plan falls far short of the minimum goals we need to meet in order to safeguard our state from the well-documented impacts of the changing climate. The energy path we choose to follow here is vitally important, not only for us New Yorkers. It will have an impact on other states as well. I am an Indiana transport transplant, having moved to Albany shortly before the pandemic in order to live close to my two grandsons, whose future I'm very concerned about. So I personally understand how important New York's role is in the national effort to combat the effects of climate change. Concerned citizens in states whose political decision makers are beholden to fossil fuel interests look to us for climate leadership. By setting new goals and moving ahead in a forward-thinking pragmatic way, New York can provide much-needed leadership at this very crucial time. For that reason in particular, I've been very disappointed by New York's lack of progress since 2022. Our administration has ignored the mandates of the CLCPA and the scoping plan. Any attempt to prop up polluting costly fossil fuel systems and/or to turn to unproven, even more costly, toxic, slow-to-build nuclear options is only going to compound the problems we face. We have the proven technologies of solar, wind, battery storage, geothermal, in addition to our hydro to rely on. Even without subsidies, these forms of energies are less expensive than outdated fossil fuels. Procrastinating now is only going to mean greater future costs to our physical infrastructure, our economy, and our health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I know we've had some, some folks join us recently, and I, I do want to mention, if you are registered to speak, if you check in the chat, we're putting up the names of the next five speakers so that you can see approximately when you might be called on. And so let's start with Hamanshu Ahuja. Nivo Rovedo. Gabrielle Recchio. Andrew Foster. Or Anne Marie Ruggles. We'll be back if, if those folks join us at some point. Jen Rand.
Hi, I'm Jen Rand with New Yorkers for Clean Power. And I'm here to urge all of you to use your power to strengthen this energy plan by incorporating the recommendations from the Climate Action Scoping Plan, which was developed by experts with multiple rounds of community input. The people have already spoken. I'm also here to ask you to include further recommendations to reduce fossil fuel use across the state. Right now, utilities are legally obligated to serve gas. It's just common sense that they should instead be obligated to serve energy. That way, utilities can invest in clean energy when and where it makes sense. With the obligation to serve gas in place, all ratepayers are stuck wasting money on unsafe, leak-prone, and increasingly obsolete gas infrastructure that's harmful to human health and the environment in addition to driving up our gas bills. Our electric infrastructure is old and needs to be updated. Our gas infrastructure is also due for replacement and costs millions of miles or millions per mile of pipe. It's not reasonable to keep pouring money into both systems. No one is asking you to shut off gas tomorrow. We're asking you to recommend that utilities be allowed to start the process of strategically and safely pruning the gas system, particularly through neighborhood-scale thermal energy networks and non-pipe alternatives. As such, the 2025 state energy plan should recommend eliminating subsidies for new gas interconnections and amending the, the gas utility obligation to serve. The energy plan should also recommend setting specific emissions limits for the gas system. Including these recommendations will send an important signal to the governor, the legislature, the Public Service Commission, and other state agencies and the public that it's time to pick up the pace on building a clean energy future where our communities are safe, healthy, and resilient. Now is not the time for defeatism and delay. It's time to invest in our future, not the past. And you have a responsibility to bring that vision to life. Thank you.
Your comment. Charles Nacostro. Jen Horowitz.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jen.
Hi, I'm Jen Horowitz and I have been a teacher for 34 years. And we spend a lot of time teaching children that our planet is in danger and we need to do our part. New York must do its part now. The state energy plan must meet the dire urgent need to address climate change and fossil fuel pollution that are affecting our health and environment. I was thrilled when the CLCPA passed. And now the state energy plan must follow the Climate Act. It is critical to build upon the Climate Action Council scoping plan and make decisions based on the advice of experts. The horrific federal policy changes in recent times should compel us to lead the nation by example. The plan must reduce pollution and invest in clean energy solutions that grow our local economies. Our scientists have given us all the tools we need, geothermal, solar, wind, and more. The state energy plan must stop any expansion of gas. No new gas pipelines, no new gas power plants, no new gas line extensions. Gas expansion is directly in conflict with our climate law and burdens ratepayers with expensive, dirty resources that we don't want. It is infuriating to continually fight fossil fuel infrastructures, highway expansions, and more. I support the cap and invest program because it is a key tool to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the building and transportation sectors and raises funds that can make energy more affordable during the clean energy transition. The plan, the energy plan stops at identifying obstacles rather than proposing or even acknowledging solutions to help fund the clean energy transition. The additional action scenario falls far short of what's required for greenhouse gas reductions from buildings and other sectors. Instead of simply cataloging barriers, the final energy plan must focus on solutions by proposing the needed investments, tools, and regulatory mandates to achieve our legally required climate targets. We need bold action and show the world that the US, New York, has not given up on climate action and is still committed to a thriving, clean energy future for our children, our health, our environment, and our economic future depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Lucille Gianobola. So sorry, Lucille. Sean Ryan. And again, if these, if these folks were able to sign on a little bit later, we will go back and, and hear from them. Charles Thomas. Stacy Duncan.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Stacy Duncan and I serve as the CEO of the Leadership Alliance, which is a partnership between the Broom County Industrial Development Agency and the Greater Binghamton Chamber, Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. As a lifelong native of the Southern Tier, I can attest to the fact that our region knows what it means to build. For more than a century, the Southern, the upstate New York and the Southern Tier specifically have powered industries that shaped our nation, from semiconductors and batteries to the technologies that drive today's global economy. Amid historic investment from the private, private sector, the Southern Tier is well positioned to share in future success. But reliable, reliable energy is essential for achieving growth that lifts our communities. We are competing for transformational projects, not just on the national level, but at global stage. Companies deciding where to invest are asking simple questions. Can we access the levels of energy that we currently need? And can we be certain that additional energy can be available as we scale? If we are not prepared, New York risks losing jobs, tax revenues, and elevating individuals out of poverty and significant community spin-off benefits that these projects represent. We strongly support the direction outlined in the draft state energy plan to focus on a balanced, all-of-the-above-energy future in which renewables continue to scale up, while proven reliable resources like natural gas are maintained to preserve reliability and affordability. And transmission and distribution system work is supported to ensure we move more energy where it is needed most. We also continue to, we also commend the continued exploration of advanced nuclear as a clean source of power for our future. Energy planning must be in lockstep with economic development goals. The draft state energy plan represents a roadmap. It's how our state will deliver abundant, reliable, and affordable energy to power the next generation of growth. Thank you.
Sarah Stevens. Robert Howarth.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Bob Howarth. I'm an earth system scientist, a longtime faculty member at Cornell University and a member of the New York State Climate Action Council. I am dismayed, quite frankly, that the draft energy plan is pulling back so significantly from the blueprint that we on the Climate Action Council laid out in the final scoping plan from December of 2022. We passed that on 19 to three vote. I note that seven of the Climate Action Council members also serve on the energy board and all voted for the plan. So what has changed? The largest source of emissions in our state is from the use of energy in homes and commercial buildings, particularly for heating. And the scoping plan called for a rapid move towards the use of heat pumps for heating and cooling with the need to retrofit 250,000 homes per year. The state is far behind on this. And the draft energy plan simply, simply seems to be walking away from it. Calls for very little change in natural gas over the next 15 years. The final scoping plan from the CAC called for an 80% drop in the use of natural gas by 2040, a huge difference. As the scoping plan demonstrates, the switch to heat pumps would not only be necessary to meet the climate laws goals, but it also makes good economic sense, particularly for the 1.5 million homes heated with fuel, oil, and propane. Payback period is just a few to six years for those. But even for those heated by natural gas, the economics are, are extremely favorable. I want to say just a little bit about nuclear. It's too expensive, too slow to deploy. The scoping plan did not call for nuclear. And the science has gotten even stronger in that sense. There's a new paper on small modular reactors showing that their waste is two to 30 times greater than that from conventional plants. So I urge the state energy boards to go back, do some rethinking, take a look again at our scoping plan, and please endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Darcy Sax. Donald Hughes. Carlo Costa.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Costa.
Thank you. My name is Carlo Costa. I'm the Director of Policy and Research at the New York Building Congress. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Building Congress represents more than 500 companies and over 250,000 skilled tradespeople and professionals who build the housing, infrastructure, and the energy projects that keep New York competitive. Thanks for the chance to comment on the draft 2025 state energy plan. The draft sets, says a clear ambition to cut emissions, expand renewable power, and modernize the grid. We appreciate its honesty in noting that existing timelines for reaching 70% renewable electricity and at a 40% emissions cut by 2030 may be out of reach under current conditions. Renewable projects are unfortunately moving too slowly. Inflation is raising capital costs and demand for both gas and electricity is climbing. These realities call for an all-of-the-above strategy that preserves reliability and keeps energy affordable. This means more renewables, a modernized gas system, energy storage, stronger grids, and new nuclear baseload energy. The final plan should also include a robust assessment of CLCPA mandates by the PSC, a review of past efforts, and a roadmap for the next steps that are achievable, preserve customer choice, and are affordable. The plan rightly notes that natural gas will remain a part of the mix for the foreseeable future. Projects such as the Northeast Supply Enhancement Line would strengthen downstate reliability and protect customers from price shocks while the state continues to build out renewables. Further, many surcharges appear on utility bills with little explanation. The plan should require clear, accessible breakdowns of costs and create policies that shield co-ops, condos, and small property owners from drastic increases. Thank you for your consideration and for your commitment to a secure energy future.
Thank you for your comment. Erin Boyd. Manisha Rain Fonda Caro.
Good evening, Energy Planning Board. I am Dr. Manisha Rane Fonda Caro, President, Soul Led Solutions in Albany. The fastest way to bring renewable energy online is by building microgrids on municipal water and wastewater treatment facilities with onsite electric substation owned and operated by the local utilities. Microgrids could match the voltage of the distribution or transmission line to bypass the need for transformers, which are currently in short supply. The energy from these microgrids could be used to provide capacity and frequency services to the renewable energy projects in the interconnection queue, thereby helping them to come online expeditiously. And a municipal ownership of these microgrids would exempt them from paying federal and state income tax and free use of land, offsetting all incentives previously received by renewable energy. Now, wouldn't that be poetic justice if we didn't pay federal tax on the renewable energy produced on the municipal land? Okay, moreover, municipal ownership will attract funding from the Wall Street, giving renewable energy state backing, solid endorsement, so that the Wall Street would feel confident to fund these projects. I'm submitting Soul Led Solutions proposal as comment in response to the draft state energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mikel Lee.
I'm muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. New York needs to go back to the drawing board. The draft SCP does not support Climate Act goals of a transition to renewable states grid, efficiency, and sustainability. Instead, it promotes continuing the status quo and in fact would further shackle the state to non-renewable, dirty, and toxic fossil and nuclear fuel-based generation. Plan is furthermore fatally flawed on its face. Primus fashi, fatally flawed. It acknowledges a dramatically changing federal policy environment, but deprives public stakeholders of meaningful public comment because it is based on completely now outmoded framework. This is like asking the public to comment on the plan to build a building while the entire landscape is being hit by an earthquake. You need, and then saying, we only get to comment on this outmoded draft plan and don't have the right to comment on what will be promoted as the final plan. This is unacceptable and completely transparent and not good governance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. John Healy.
Hi, am I there?
Yes, you are.
I'm John Healy. I'm with Pipelineers Union Local 798. And I'd just like to leave a comment. I'm not from New York, although I would like to have been. You know, it's a beautiful state. I think that the natural gas is definitely going to be a major player in the, it has to be a major player in the future of the energy needs in New York. And I know there's a lot of people living there, like there is in my state here, that require abundant, affordable energy to get through the winter. And natural gas is a major player, and I, I agree with the first speaker, Roger. And I would also like to say that you know, those that speak on, we have to rely on renewables such as wind and solar, might not be completely educated on what those technologies actually are and how reliable they really are and how efficient they are by the time you spend the energy to manufacture a panel and install it and the wind and all the rest. But respectfully, that's how I feel. And thanks for having this public comment period. With that, I will remand the remainder of my time, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Dorinda Darden. Chris Sagas. Adam Flint.
Good evening. My name is Adam Flint. I'm representing the Network for a Sustainable Tomorrow based in Binghamton. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I've worked with New York state agencies and policymakers in the clean energy space since 2011, including Regulatory and Legislative Affairs, as well as Program Design and Implementation. Since the Reforming the Energy Vision proceeding started in 2014 and the CLCPA passed in 2019, New York has been a leader in this field. At a time when the federal government is actively hostile to addressing climate and clean energy deployment, we need that leadership more than ever. Unfortunately, this plan and recent actions taken by relevant agencies and the governor are not meeting the moment, to put it mildly. This plan points New York in the wrong direction with a all-of-the-above strategy that is in flagrant violation of the Climate Act and opens New York up to litigation. It is responding to political pressures from the fossil fuel industry in Washington. The state's slow progress is due to its failure to properly fund the act, not because it cannot be done. New Yorkers are also facing an energy affordability crisis with more than two million households and arrears, including myself. I'm a NISIC customer with a ground source heat pump, and I've spent more than eight thousand dollars to date this year on electricity, two and a half times what I spent last year. I have a good income. If I can't afford these rates, and I can't, LMI and DAC communities are in a far more dire situation. NISIC is again requesting double-digit rate increases. The Public Service Commission has failed the affordability test, and the rate case process is broken. The plan before us will make the situation worse, not better, despite claims to the contrary. The energy plan must reject expensive and dangerous nuclear and methane development, where robustly funding CLCPA mandates, replacing fossil fuel heating with heat pumps, energy efficiency, and district energy systems, and further facilitating renewable energy deployment. This plan in its current form must be rejected. Thank you.
You for your comment. Gerard Weir. Zachary Cunningham. Alan Blair.
Hello. State officials listening to these comments have to be tired of hearing the same lies about renewables over and over again. They're unaffordable, they're dangerous, they're unreliable. So let me tell a different story. Renewable energy is cheap. On a cost-per-kilowatt-hour basis, it leaves natural gas in the dust. Renewable energy is safe. You don't get oil spills, carbon monoxide poisoning, or exploding houses with renewables. Renewable energy is getting progressively more reliable. Battery storage is improving really fast, and by 2050, we will be ready for our off-peak needs. By the way, this idea that we will suddenly flick the off switch on fossil fuels is a lie. The transition was always meant to be gradual. And yet, folks at these hearings are earnestly repeating this stuff. They obviously believe what they're saying. For that, we can blame big fossil fuel. They've crafted some really effective focus group-tested disinformation to counter the Climate Act. And it's working. A significant percentage of the state's electorate, and even some elected officials, believe it. It's also, as intended, slowing our progress in fighting climate change. For proof, just look at this poor excuse for an energy plan. I know for a fact that many of the people who worked on this plan also advised the Climate Action Council. Three years ago, you would have been ashamed to show us such a pitifully timid document. And yet, because of big fossil fuel, here we are. So here are my suggestions. First, scrap all parts of this energy plan that don't get us to net zero. The rest is unworthy of your efforts. Second, invest in an aggressive PR campaign against fossil fuel lies. Without it, we'll never fully transition to renewables. Use as a model the DOH's campaign against anti-vaxxer disinformation. Thank you, Dr. McDonald. Bottom line, if we're not shooting for net zero, we're wasting our time and tax dollars.
Thank you for your comment. Srihan Salam.
Good evening. My name is Srihan Salam, and I'm a junior at Horace Greeley High School in Chapel Creek, New York. I wanted to share today why the draft energy plan, as currently written, falls short for young people like me. It should follow the recommendations of the Climate Action Council's scoping plan, but right now, it continues our dependencies on methane gas for far too long. We are already seeing the consequences of burning fossil fuels, including wildfires, record-breaking heat, floods, and rising seas. Scientists warn that people under forty will face the most serious life-changing effects. My generation will live with the results of the choices made today. At the same time, New York is still subsidizing gas hookups while gas companies spend money to slow down climate progress. This leaves young people like me feeling unprotected. But there is a better path. Investing in clean energy and electrification can lower bills, create jobs, and protect our communities while ensuring a livable future. The plan's support for nuclear energy is a positive step, and I hope that Governor Hochul will also follow through on other commitments such as CAP and Invest. I respectfully urge you to strengthen this plan and align it with the Climate Action Council's scoping plan. Please act now to safeguard both today's communities and tomorrow's. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. John Rah. Kathleen McCarthy. Catherine Do. Maya Baird. Oh, I'm sorry. Kathleen McCarthy. I understand that you're here.
Yeah, thank you. I could see the unmute. Thank you very much. My name is Kathleen McCarthy. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the draft state energy plan. I live in New York City, and I am a member volunteer with Sierra Club. Addressing the climate crisis is my highest priority. I am disheartened by a clear retreat from the scoping plan's concrete recommendations. I am especially disheartened by the lack of a funding mechanism and no mention of an elimination of the gas utility obligation to serve. I haven't heard a reasonable explanation for the lack of a CAP and Invest program, which was endorsed in the scoping plan. Now that the cost of solar has dramatically decreased, and there are amazing achievements in battery technology every day, it is even more important to solidify funding to take advantage of these innovations as quickly as possible. And as a former government employee, I am aware of how slowly the wheels turn. So it needs to be done now, not later. A momentum, the momentum of clean energy is surging. We need to move faster, make it easier to build, and easier for individuals to take advantage of the newest technologies available, such as plug-in solar. Utah did it. New York State can do it. An energy plan without a reliable and robust funding mechanism is like trying to fix a broken leg by kissing it. As a citizen of New York State, I'm tired of plans and no action. It is bizarre that New York, in New York State, we still have obligation to serve gas. We are forcing the build-out of gas infrastructure at a high cost to ratepayers. This is not affordable. Removing this barrier to clean renewable energy must be in the energy plan. We can't wait for legislative bills. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.
You for your comment. Catherine Do. Maya Baird. Sarah Valeri.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I appreciate that we've had comments from young people previously because I am also here to represent young people to the best of my ability. I work in the mental health field, and I can tell you that throughout the clients that I work with, who are elementary, middle school, high school, young adults, the specter of climate change, the fear of their future, the awareness that the adults in their community are not protecting their best interests is always in either the back or the forefront of their mind. It is constantly raising their level of anxiety. They are quite aware that the climate is changing, that there is danger in the future. And it is very difficult as an adult who has the responsibility to speak to them with honesty, to look them in the face and tell them that the adults in charge are making decisions in their best interest. If you are putting the profits of fossil fuel companies in front of the children of our community, then I cannot look at them and tell them that they're going to be safe. You need to take this as a set of priorities that will guide your decisions with the best of the scientific evidence available. Thank you. I remand my time.
Thank you for your comment. Sandy Stratton Gonzalez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Sandy.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Sandy Stratton Gonzalez, I'm in Fishkill, New York. I'm a Central Hudson customer, which means I get robbed. And I'm representing Boomers. I'm also a member of Mothers Out Front, Dutchess County. I want to talk about gas. I want to talk about what we willfully forget, what we know and we ignore. I lived in New York City for forty-two years. During that time, there were two experiences with serious natural gas leaks, which meant that I had to leave my home. Thankfully, National Grid was able to come in, send a construction crew, and fix the leaks. In Boston, I was burned out of my home. This is in the seventies. And the gas lines contributed to the loss of an entire city block's worth of housing. Ten years ago, I went to Dimmock and Montrose, Pennsylvania, and I interviewed people who were living with the fracking explosion, whose water would light up when a match was held, a lit match was held to it, who ended up having to leave their homes and take an intense loss. A gentleman, Ray, who was a hunter, talked about the, he couldn't hunt anymore because the deer had open sores where the flesh was ruined. They were ruined. They were sick. And this was because they would fracking wastewater, they would lick it because it was very salty. Fracking and plastics. We're monetizing pollution, right? The, the plethora, the growth of plastic products is in part due to the fracking residue and the use of this monetization of this product, this waste product into new plastics. So what are we doing? We're poisoning ourselves. We have microplastics. We've been subsidizing gas for years. It's ridiculous. It's time to subsidize renewables. And let me just say, in 1931, not long before he died.
I want to thank you for your comment and suggest that you submit the rest of it in writing.
I will submit Henry Ford's comments in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to John Rah. Mr. Rah.
Thank you. I'm now unmuted. I'm commenting as a citizen who's followed energy issues since about fifteen years old during the seventies energy crisis. First of all, thanks for eliminating hydrogen blending, prioritizing LMI upgrades, and instead of replacements of leak-prone pipe emphasizing repairs and relining. Those are good. But I feel overall that the plan is short on specifics and firm commitments and goals called for by the scoping plan. With respect to building decarb, there needs to be a clearer vision, which includes specific appliance emission standards, emission limits on gas delivered to buildings, and a specific plan to phase out fossil fuel appliances. With respect to transmission, uh, transportation, sorry, I would like to see a strict target for vehicle miles traveled. And then financing is very important and critical. So the CAP and Invest has been mentioned. Specifics, it needs to be part of the energy plan so that we can fund good programs like Empower. Specifics, it needs to be part of the energy plan so that we can fund good programs like Empower Plus and Gap. Uh, also, I'd like to see elimination of unfair and unnecessary subsidies, mostly by eliminating the hundred-foot rule and the obligation to serve. And then finally, lastly, if an unproven, risky, ultra-expensive, and environmentally destructive technology like nuclear can get its own chapter in this plan, then so should a proven, safe, affordable, climate-friendly, and currently scalable technology like geothermal heating and cooling be, uh, get its own chapter. The benefits of geothermal heating and cooling are recognized by both NYSERDA and the U.S. Department of Energy. And with that, I conclude my statement. Thank you.
You for your comment. Santosh Nandobalan? Paula Iacano? Michael McLean? Mr. McLean? I'll check back with you. Zachary Sholdies?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I, I am just speaking as a private citizen in Western New York. Um, I am urge urging everyone to consider, um, the repeal of the New York State Energy Plan. Um, as a, with the goal of transitioning cleaner energy to sources is commendable. Most people don't understand at what cost that actually takes place. I'm quite frankly shocked at the amount of people that think that clean energy comes with no cost. Fossil fuels are in everything, even from these, these energy and EV cars. There's fossil fuels in everything, from there to everything in their households. The amount of, I'm sorry, um, the amount of carbon emissions required to produce many of these things, as well as upgrading our electrical system to what everyone wants this, or this bill wants it to be, won't offset the, the carbon emissions that it'll end up saving. Uh, New Yorkers are already at the brink of bankruptcy with their energy bills double and some places tripling. ISAG and Rochester Jenner, um, and Electric are paying a offshore and, and, um, international company to raise our rates. This is getting to be ridiculous. There is, it, it's not clean energy, it is alternative energy. And that's what most people don't understand. It is not clean energy. And the amount of money that it's going to cost to increase and, and replace this infrastructure to most people's homes is thirty to forty thousand dollars, which most people don't understand what that cost is going to take. It is not going to, everyone with the fear mongering with the, you know, save it, save the planet for our kids, that, that has been going on for thirty to forty years. It was the, the ice caps and we're gonna be, the oceans are gonna be dropping in sea levels. It is not going to happen. It continues to happen. And then the fear mongering then gets pushed out. This is not.
Mr. Sholdies, I want to thank you for your comment. Your time has expired.
I urge everyone to appeal this.
Please submit, please submit your comments in writing. We're happy to receive them. Um, Philip Guillamot?
Hello, my name is Philip Guillamot, and I am a Sierra Club volunteer and member of its Finger Lakes Group Executive Committee. I am personally shocked and appalled concerning the woeful inadequacy of the draft state energy plan. The Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act passed in two thousand nineteen set clean energy guidelines for our state specifically to attain seventy percent of our energy production by twenty thirty, but no greenhouse gas emissions. The scoping plan passed three years ago was an excellent document and gave concrete ways to implement that goal. The draft energy plan, however, gets rid of most of the scoping plan's specific recommendations and substitutes non-committal suggestions for vague future planning or action. Not only is this poor policy, but it is unlawful. The CLCPA mandates that the energy plan reflects the scoping plan's recommendations. We can't have business as usual when our country and planet are being ravaged by the increasingly severe consequences of greenhouse gas-induced disasters, including severe heat, fires, droughts, hurricanes, loss of glaciers and polar ice, rising sea levels with loss of coastlines and islands, loss of wildlife, severe economic losses, and mass migration. The state is abdicating its, abdicating its responsibility to its people. Instead, it must realize that the choice to make energy costs supposedly more affordable by ignoring the severe environmental consequences of lack of action is a false one. I urge that the state energy plan incorporate the specific programs outlined in the two thousand twenty-two scoping plan, including the cap and invest program to not only help save our environment, but also to make our cost of energy more affordable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anshul Gupta?
Good evening. My name is Anshul Gupta. I'm the Policy and Research Director at New York City for Clean Power. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the draft state energy plan. This plan locks in decades of virtually unmitigated fossil fuel combustion in our buildings. As the Energy Planning Board is very well aware, because the same energy, uh, agency heads are also members of the Climate Actions Council, the scoping plan is indeed an all-of-the-above plan. It doesn't recommend yanking out gas overnight, but is about a decades-long transition in which all energy sources coexist, as we slowly transition from health and climate-destroying fuels to cleaner ones. The draft energy plan is a gas-first plan that grinds the transition to a crawl and misleadingly dubs itself as all-of-the-above. For example, the utility obligation to serve gas is not all-of-the-above. It is a gas mandate. The scoping plan recommends amending it to a fuel-agnostic obligation to serve energy. In diverging from the scoping plan, the draft energy plan embraces the costly, polluting gas status quo and gives gas utilities a green light to invest billions of ratepayer dollars into replacing old pipes with new ones instead of cleaner and cheaper options. While we can and should avoid unneeded investments in the gas infrastructure, our electric grid does need modernization and expansion for resiliency and to accommodate new loads and new generation. However, the way we fund the capital cost of transmission is inherently unfair and costly to ratepayers. Just this month, California passed a landmark bill that authorizes and facilitates public financing and public-private partnerships for new transmission projects to address some of the same issues that we are experiencing in New York. We strongly urge the Energy Planning Board to similarly consider bond financing for large transmission projects like Clean Path to avoid adding the cost, uh, to utility bills. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Scott Loveland?
Hi, I'm Scott Loveland and I live in Dutchess County. With my community suffering from climate change, I want to commend you on a draft state energy plan that gives a good overview of our state's progress on clean, on a clean energy future. A lot has been accomplished and many individual climate solutions are available. Now, the plan needs to map out the kind of systemic changes that'll enable us to meet the climate laws mandates in an affordable way. I want to focus on one in particular, utility regulation. Our current cost-of-service model for utility regulation was designed way back in the nineteen thirties, when the goal was getting everyone connected to the grid. It encourages utilities to build more infrastructure because their rates and their profits are directly tied to the value of their capital investments. But today, our challenge isn't connectivity, it's affordability, disaster resilience, and clean energy. But our investor-owned utilities are still rewarded when they spend more by building infrastructure, not when they perform better. So we ratepayers are facing rising costs, more outages, and climate impacts. Performance-based regulation, or PBR, is an alternative to cost-of-service regulation. PBR compensates utilities based on their performance against predefined metrics aligned with state goals, rather than just on their costs. It encourages utilities to focus on outcomes like cost control, improved reliability, and reduced emissions, rather than just selling more electricity or building more infrastructure. Several states have already switched to the PBR model with great success. As Energy Planning Board members, you have a tremendous opportunity to help our communities by taking the lead on this issue. I urge you to seize this moment and include a goal of transitioning to performance-based regulation in the state energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jacqueline Allende Rodriguez?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today. I'm Jacqueline with the Public Utility Law Project of New York. We advocate for low-income utility customers across all of New York State. Chapter eighteen of the draft state energy plan shows health benefits from cleaner air, including fewer premature deaths, heart attacks, hospitalizations, and lost workdays, with at least thirty-five percent of these projected to be index. It is clear that intervention is a must to keep New Yorkers healthy. To build on the strong foundation, the plan should address other health pathways. Energy insecurity is a major gap. Utility shut-offs and inadequate heating or cooling create serious health risks but are not modeled. Mental health impacts are not analyzed, and physical health impacts are limited. Pope recommends broader climate health analysis, tracking health effects of he, heat, cold, severe storms, wildfires, and droughts. Dedicated mental health assessments, including measuring mental health impacts from energy insecurity and climate disasters. And energy insecurity as a health, health determinant. We must understand the negative health outcomes, especially for medically vulnerable households, as too many must file with the Department of Public Service to have medical protections applied. And inter-agency coordination, requiring the Department of Health, NYSERDA, and utilities to share data and create joint interventions. We must safeguard healthcare access. About seven point seven million New Yorkers are enrolled in Medicaid, and with future federal changes, reducing coverage and creating, that could create further financial strain in homes. Energy affordability must remain central so that these health benefits of the clean energy transition reach every household and no one is left behind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Josh Kellerman?
Hello, uh, my name is Josh Kellerman. I work for Climate Jobs New York, which is a coalition of labor unions, um, representing two and a half million workers in New York. Our mission is to advocate for a clean energy economy at the scale climate science demands, creating good union jobs and supporting equitable communities in New York. Uh, we support the overall approach of the state energy plan, but think it could be more ambitious in the following ways. It should speak more directly to the CLCPA and align itself with the mandates in the law. It should ensure all climate jobs are good union jobs by integrating labor standards throughout each section of the plan. It should address affordability, not just through lowering cost, but also through raising wages. It should create a visionary agenda for aggregating building retrofits and distributed generation to achieve scale and establish labor standards in the industry. It should proactively build out our energy transmission system in preparation for future clean energy generation, even if that future is somewhat uncertain. It should, uh, expand the public sector's key leadership role in constructing and owning energy assets, especially during this time of federal opposition to climate initiatives. And it should ensure detailed and accurate tracking of all renewable energy projects in New York in a publicly accessible database, including detailed job-level data and project status. Ultimately, we believe New York Cannon should lead on creating an equitable transition to a clean energy fut, future, and the draft state energy plan takes important strides towards those objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellerman. Kay Lustig? Anne Rab? Mark Murray? Jerry Wiley?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Um, good evening. Um, my name is Jerry Wiley. I'm a public health nurse and an energy navigator living in Ougah, uh, Southern Tier, New York, helping New York residents decarbonize their homes and reduce their energy bills. The CLCPA is the law, but the draft state energy plan does not chart a clear or enforceable path to meet CPC, CLCPA mandates. It assumes continued fossil fuel build-outs, leaves major gaps in accountability, and it even ignores key requirements of the law itself. For example, the CLCPA requires methane to be measured for its true, short-term, twenty-year heat-trapping power, not deceptively spread out over one hundred years. It also requires that all energy used by New Yorkers, including imports, be counted. The draft plan sidesteps both of these, undercounting our real climate impact. We often hear the excuse of affordability, that families are struggling with high bills and we can't afford a fast transition, but the truth is the opposite. Fossil fuels cause volatility and price spikes, while weatherization heat pumps and solar lower bills right now. And we could achieve this without new nuclear power, which is too costly, too slow, and diverts resources away from proven clean solutions. So delay is not a money saver. It's the most expensive path. It means higher storm damage, higher health costs, and continued fossil-driven energy bills. The CLCPA was designed to protect both our climate and our economy, and the energy plan should be a binding roadmap for compliance, not a retreat. And New York, New Yorkers deserve energy that's clean, affordable, and reliable, and, and nuclear-free, and the fastest way to get there is by following the law that we already passed. Thank you.
You for your comment. Wendy Seligson?
Hello, my name is Wendy Seligson. I'm a resident of Riverdale in the Bronx. I am here representing the Jewish Climate Action Network NYC, of which I'm a co-director. Thank you for hosting this hearing. Our members come from all denominations in the Jewish faith and also include those who identify as just Jewish. We are compelled by our faith to act in order to protect and preserve life, a doctrine in Hebrew known as Bikkur Nepeish. Our members are worried, and we are not alone. We are here today to ask you to invest more in clean energy. The state energy plan must include specific mechanisms to finance the clean energy transition while ensuring energy affordability, including through cap and invest. This is our future. We are also here to ask you to make the New York State Energy Plan a much stronger, clearer roadmap for complying with New York's two thousand nineteen climate law, the CLCPA, which we advocated for at that time. Among other things, the plan needs to lay out strong interim targets for achieving the CLCPA. How can we meet our goals without clear, strong targets to achieve? Build on the two thousand twenty-two scoping plan. We watched as the plan was created by experts with extensive public input. We need to use it more fully. End gas expansion, and ultimately, New York's dependence on expensive, outmolded fossil fuels, and undertake permit reforms to unlock clean projects more quickly and affordably. We have no time to waste. Please make this plan one that leaves no doubt that it will protect life today and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Sharon Hewlett Shepherd? Ms. Hewlett Shepherd? She may be having a technical challenge. We'll, we'll return. Allison Adams Weinberg? Brandon Luntin? Linda Sank?
Oh, here we go. Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Hi, my name's Linda Sank. I am a homeowner and voter in Copake, New York, which is part of Columbia County. I support New York's goal- I support New York's goal of transitioning to renewable energy. However, there are serious problems with how the transition is going. Massive solar projects are being built upstate and in appropriate locations. One project with which I'm very familiar, Hecate Shepherd's Run Solar Project in Copake, New York, will be built on prime agricultural land, next door to a regional fourteen-hundred-student K-through-twelve school and in the watershed for the drinking water for the city of Hudson, New York. Hudson, New York. There's no place for a forty-two-megawatt solar project. Even worse, the developer is allegedly insolvent, according to one of its lenders. Yet, New York State's ORIS appears to be poised to give it a permit. The New York State Energy Plan must protect agriculture schools and the state's finances while developing renewable energy. As well, someone who is in a home that is all electric, our electric bills are over the top, and this new solar farm will not help any of the residents of Copake for their electric bills. Anything will be going and going downstate. The only reason it's being built here is because there is a grid available. And again, you need to protect local residents. And the town of Copake has been very clear about how it feels about putting the solar on our prime agricultural land. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I do want to say that if folks who registered to make a comment have decided they'd prefer to submit their comment in writing, there is instruction right on the slide that you're looking at that provides you with information on how to do that. Sharon Hewlett Shepherd.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hello. Hello, Chairman Harris and all other members and the audience. I'm Sharon Hewlett Shepherd, a homeowner and voter in Crayerville, New York. I support New York State's goal of transitioning to renewable energy. However, there are serious problems with how the transition is going. Massive solar projects are being built upstate at inappropriate locations. One project, which I am very familiar, is Hecate Shepherd's Run Project in Copake. I live fifty feet from where it's going to be built. It is situated on prime agricultural land, next door to a regional fourteen-hundred-student K-through-twelve school and in a watershed for the drinking water for the city of Hudson. ORIS has the obligation to consult with the New York State Department of Health regarding the steps that should be taken to protect the Teconic watershed. Even worse, the developer is allegedly insolvent, according to one of the lenders. Yet, New York ORIS appears to be poised to give it a permit. The New York Energy Plan must protect agriculture school and the state's finances while developing renewable energy. I want to address the impact of this of solar development across New York State on rural communities. We are expected to shoulder the burden of solar development. In addition to fire risks, impact on threatened and endangered species, noise and light pollution, and protection of wetlands, including protection of drinking water as required by ORIS regulations, there are many reasons to not destroy land in rural communities. Please protect the soils where food is grown. In two thousand twenty-five State of the State Address, Governor Kathy Hochul stated, "The agriculture community is the backbone of our economy, and we will continue to invest in our farmers, our youth, and our future to make sure that New York remains a vibrant and competitive force in agriculture for generations to come." And over the past five years, approximately five hundred million in state and federal funding has committed through nineteen different programs and initiatives that have helped reduce hunger, strengthen local food supply chain, and support the state's agricultural industry. There's also preservation that New York has worked really hard at. And for us to have solar development come in and destroy farmlands, it is just opposite of what Governor Hochul has said. Building a project in Copake or any other rural community in New York is a bad idea. Yes, we are in a climate crisis, but please put together a plan to balance every energy need with all the preservation of farm and rural communities. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your comment. We're going to move on. Valdi Weiderpass.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Valdi Weiderpass. I live in the Binghamton area. I'm a retired engineer, now volunteering as Chair of Sierra Club Susquehanna Group. The draft Energy Plan argues that meeting the CLCPA reduction goals is much easier and less costly if we revert to old greenhouse gas accounting rules per UN Kyoto Protocol. Do not do this because it would weaken the effectiveness of our climate law. Instead, keep using the CLCPA greenhouse gas emissions accounting rules. I want to point out that despite New York claiming that it's a climate leader, in reality, it's California. They have managed to get to a point where they have thirty-eight percent of their electricity generation coming from solar and wind. And that's not even including the hydropower that they have, which is on top of that. New York, in comparison, over eighteen years has only managed to grow solar and wind to be about six to six and a half percent of our electricity generation. That's pathetic, and it should not be used as an excuse to back off on this draft Energy Plan. Energy use in buildings, particularly for heating, is the single largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in New York State. And the Climate Action Council's scoping plan called for retrofitting two hundred fifty thousand homes per year with heat pumps. However, the draft Energy Plan largely just assumes only a little change in the use of fossil fuels in buildings well into the future. The plan must call for effective programs to speed up adoption of air source and geothermal heat pumps. Per the scoping plan, there must be an orderly downsizing of gas delivery infrastructure to begin to phase out the use of fossil fuels. The Cap and Invest program was a key part of funding progress in the scoping plan, and yet implementation has been repeatedly delayed. The draft Energy Plan must call for rapid implementation of this vital, important program that's called Cap and Invest. The governor's push for nuclear energy is reckless because nuclear power is too expensive, too toxic, too risky, and too slow to build to be a climate solution.
I want to thank you for your comment. We're going to move on. And please submit the rest of your comment in writing. Linda Nguyen.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Good evening to the Energy Planning Board. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening. My name is Linda Nguyen, and I'm a faculty researcher at the Climate Jobs Institute, which is part of Cornell University's Industrial and Labor Relations School. At CJI, we study the labor and employment impacts of the clean energy transition. And we're pleased to see that the state plans continue investing in clean energy projects that promote high-quality jobs, minimize inequality, and generate local economic benefits. I'm going to highlight some gaps and opportunities CJI hopes the state will research and incorporate into its draft plan, and my written testimony will provide further details on our recommendations. So first, New York's current laws are leaving workers behind. Not all clean energy sectors are covered by labor protections, and some workers still face poor job conditions. So as a first step, labor standards can be expanded to cover more sectors like battery storage and nuclear. Further, requiring strong labor standards on a new program that implements neighborhood-scale decarbonization and builds public distributed energy resources can help address poor working conditions. Second, the plan could go further to highlight the public sector's vital role in constructing and owning energy assets. The labor standards in the Build Public Renewables Act are strong, and the Energy Plan could rely more on NIPA to fill the gap between our current policies and a pathway to net zero. Third, organized labor's vast training infrastructure and engagement with collective agreements that create community-sustaining jobs should be leveraged by the plan to ensure New York's workers are not left behind. And lastly, the state must do more to ensure energy affordability for low- and middle-class New Yorkers. The state should develop affordable and accessible program pathways for these households to weatherize and decarbonize, and explore other options like energy bill caps. Doing this, along with high-quality job creation, can go a long way towards building an equitable, clean energy transition. Thank you so much.
You for your comment. Paulette Bonanno.
My name is Paulette Bonanno, and I also live in the town of Copake, New York, and I'm speaking about a megawatt, forty-two-megawatt solar facility, which is causing major problems for the residents of our town. Under existing state legislation to transition to renewable energy, the developer has a choice in selecting one route, which is a traditional environmental impact statement route, or to opt into an ORIS, which is the New York State Office of Renewable Energy Siting and Electric Transition. This is the streamlined process without an environmental impact statement. So what's happened here is that the application needs ORIS to waive compliance with sixteen provisions of local law. This is a tremendous amount of a number of waivers compared to other projects statewide, which have much less waiver needs. As we wait for ORIS to issue a third notice and grant the developer a draft permit, we will continue to press our major concerns about the proposal, which include woefully inadequate screening with saplings instead of mature trees, lack of compensation for adjacent homeowners, clear cutting of forested areas, and fire safety. Project components would be adjacent to the Teconic Hills School Campus. There are no evacuation plans for the fourteen-hundred students, teachers, and staff. An access road to other areas of the proposed project crosses a stream going through wetlands and is too narrow to permit passage of fire trucks when a fire occurs. So we have--
For your-- I'm sorry. I want to thank you for your comment. Your time has expired. Would you please consider submitting the rest of your comment in writing? We're going to move on to Trudy Haberman.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Trudy Haberman, and I'm a voter and a homeowner in the town of Copake. And yes, I concur with whatever Paulette said. But I will add, I truly believe in renewable energy, but not in the way New York State is doing it. Huge solar projects are being built in the wrong places. An example is Hecate Shepherd's Run Solar Project. This is to be built near a K-through-twelve school and on agricultural land and in the watershed for drinking water for the city of Hudson. In addition, the developer is allegedly insolvent and unable to pay his loans. Yet, ORIS is planning to allow them to build this project on farmland. I thought that Governor Hochul was for farms for feeding our children, our families, and this project does not help it. It actually destroys it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Catherine Mickich.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Catherine Mickich. I am president and co-founder of Arcadian Alliance, a grassroots advocacy group based in rural Copake, New York. The Draft State Energy Plan's Section on Environmental Justice seeks to optimize energy siting, yet fails to address the economic, social, and environmental injustices faced by rural communities due to inappropriate siting. Since two thousand twenty, in the rural town of Copake, Chicago-based developer Hecate Energy has been seeking state approval to build the Shepherd's Run Major Renewable Solar Energy Facility in the heart of a historic farming hamlet. From the start, Hecate's project siting and scale has been all wrong for rural Copake. Hecate targeted the site for the open farmland in proximity to an existing electrical substation. However, the project borders residences, small businesses, and a K-through-twelve central school campus. It would also imperil two hundred acres of prime farmland, the New York State DEC-protected Deconic Creek headwaters, and cultural resources, including five National Register-eligible properties, thus threatening a local economy based on farming, recreation, and heritage tourism. As ORIS seems poised to grant Hecate a draft permit, we are facing very real risks from an expedited permitting process that has excluded community input. Therefore, we urge the New York State Energy Board to adopt siting guidelines that mandate community involvement and that rural towns also benefit from the clean energy transition. These common sense policies must steer projects away from prime agricultural lands and natural and cultural resources that are the bedrock of the rural community. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Mary O'Hara.
Yes. I'm Mary O'Hara from the Interfaith Climate Justice Community in Western New York. We include representatives of fourteen different faiths in our area. The ICJZ strongly supports New York State achieving the goals of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act and the recommendations of the Climate Action Council to utilize renewables to electrify all New York State's power sectors to the maximum extent possible. The federal pushback against solar and wind power and its denial of climate change is all the more reason that New York State needs to achieve its emission reduction and renewable energy goals. We recommend that the State Energy Plan include the following concrete steps: streamline building code regulations to permit the rapid and inexpensive installation of residential rooftop solar; increase the state's ten-gigawatt goal for installing distributed rooftop solar units to twenty gigawatts, and allow for the installation of balcony solar units; amend the current obligation-to-serv rule, which requires the construction of gas lines for heating homes whenever any one person in an area requests gas service. A more equitable obligation-to-serv rule would include the option of providing renewable-sourced air-to-air or geothermal heating and cooling; construct electrical charging stations for vehicles; strengthen the Office of Renewable Energies' siting process for siting large-scale solar and wind projects. We do not recommend state involvement in constructing new fission nuclear facilities. If we are looking for affordable power, solar and wind are the least expensive forms of electricity, while nuclear is the most expensive. Please ensure that New York State Energy Plan maintains its current goals for the sake of our economy, climate, and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hara. William Mattingly.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Bill Mattingly. I'm a native of Western New York. I'm a Sierra Club Life member, although many comments here are my own. I thank you, the commissioners and their staff, for preparing the draft Energy Plan. To be clear, we all need to fully understand that we are in a climate emergency. That is the opinion of thirty thousand climate scientists. Our state should declare a climate emergency. The Energy Plan should reflect our climate emergency. It does not. We already hit one point six degrees C of warming last year, above the preferred limit of one dot five C in the Paris Climate Accord signed just ten years ago. Worldwide concentrations of greenhouse gases, mainly carbon dioxide and methane, are still increasing. We have not bent the curve like China has. Methane, aka natural gas, is responsible for about a third of global warming. It's not clean, and it's not green. So how do we get off fossil fuels? First, we must closely adhere to the Climate Action Council's scoping plan. We must build a much larger electric grid by adding exclusively solar, wind, and storage while converting our transportation-- residential, industrial, and commercial sectors to all-electric. Here's the good news: solar power is the cheapest, and wind power is the next cheapest. Fission is the most expensive power. It'll take longest to deploy and has serious downsides, like meltdowns, radioactive waste, and target for terrorists. We must build a lot of renewables, and fast. We are choosing to either build slow and thus stealing a habitable planet from future generations, or build fast and salvage much of the climate. Build fast must be the plan. Our children and our planet depend on you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Margaret Riley. Susan Shapiro.
Yes, thank you. Hello, I'm Susan Shapiro. I'm an environmental attorney and a farmer in the Hudson Valley. And I'm submitting these comments because I adamantly object to the New York State plan to include zero emissions credits to subsidize nuclear reactors in New York State. Nuclear reactors are not zero emissions, first of all. Second of all, New York State has already wasted $7.6 billion of our hard-earned money on zero emissions credit to prop up aging nuclear reactors, and that has not produced one new gigawatt of power. It has only, on the other hand, given-- allocated $1 billion for all other renewables since nineteen-- since 2016, and that has produced at least two new gigawatts of electricity. Had, in, at that time, that $7.6 billion been allocated to renewables, New York State would already have approximately fourteen new-- fourteen new gigawatts of sustainable energy. Every penny spent on nuclear prevents that penny being spent on making New York State energy independent. So please, that's why I'm submitting these comments. Furthermore, there's a big problem that New York State has defined nuclear energy as zero emissions, when that is not true. The physics of nuclear energy make nuclear energy one of the most polluting, emitting forms of energy. Nuclear energy emits large amounts of radioactive greenhouse gases, CO2, methane, and tritium. Those are unmonitored and unconsidered. Nuclear energy also emits large quantities of thermal pollution, which cause algae blooms and fish kills, and species annihilation. Nuclear energy also emits radioactive climate change accelerators, period. Nuclear energy is not zero emissions. The life cycle of nuclear energy-- to build nuclear reactors and the-- and shipping and manufacture of waste-- of the waste that is created-- is much larger than any other kind of, any renewables. At this time, a world undergoing climate change, nuclear reactors are regularly shut down and are totally unreliable. Nuclear energy is not reliable. Droughts--
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. If you would like to submit the rest of your comment in writing, please, please do. There's an address right on the screen, on the slide. Delia Kulukundis.
Good evening, thanks. My name is Delia Kulukundis, and I'm a volunteer with 350 Brooklyn. No one asks to have their home heated by a fuel that cooks the planet, but that is what methane is. It's an incredibly potent greenhouse gas, and it leaks at every point along the way to our boilers and power plants, through pipelines and compressor stations, all the way back to the moment it was fracked and flared. Every leak contributes to our planet heating up, and every gas pipe will eventually leak. But the good news is that methane is very short-lived. So if we cut methane pollution now, it's like pulling the emergency brake on climate change. It has a huge effect, one that we could see in our lifetimes. I'm forty-one years old. If I want to have a chance at seeing global temperatures stop rising before I die, we need to start cutting methane pollution now. Many of you on the Energy Planning Board grew up before fracking started, so please think back to what summers used to be like when you were a kid. They were hot, but not too hot, and the air was never filled with wildfire smoke. Wouldn't it be nice to have that back? We can get there. But to do that, we need you to lay out a plan that will stem the flow of methane into our atmosphere. Your draft plan is insufficient. To improve it, you must recommend eliminating the gas utility obligation-to-serv. We can't have one person block an entire neighborhood from getting clean, affordable heat pumps. We need appliance standards and binding limits on pollution from gas. Otherwise, utilities will continue to ignore clean solutions in favor of new pipelines, which they will charge us to build. And we need you to recommend that all methane gas-fired power plants be replaced with clean energy. As you make trade-offs, I urge you to think about your sense of purpose in writing this plan. Is your purpose to ensure that New Yorkers have clean, affordable energy that doesn't pollute the air we breathe? Or is your purpose to increase utility profits or the profits of crackers and pipeline companies? You are public servants. Your purpose should be to serve the people, not corporations and billionaires. And if you have colleagues who aren't convinced--
Thank you for your comment. I want to thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Your time is, your time has expired, but thank you for your comment, and please feel free to submit the rest of it in writing. We are approaching the seven o'clock hour, and I have been instructed that we should continue the hearing to ensure that we can hear from everyone who is registered. So we'll move on to Matthew Pilkington. Jane Fasulo.
Yes, good evening. Jane Fasulo from Long Island. I have been since a child an environmentalist and didn't know it until I found out what environmentalists do. Why? Because I live near the water, because I've always appreciated what nature has provided for us. And I've read the energy plan, not in its entirety, it's quite overwhelming, but certainly enough sections to know that the above-- all of the above strategy built into the plan for generating electricity is not necessarily a good way to go. The strategy of all of the above has been enforced for many years, and it has not yielded significant reductions in air and water pollution, and hence a move toward reduction in the health risks of our people. Instead, the plan supports expanding the use of gas, which though cleaner burning than oil and coal, is nonetheless polluting our air and water and sickening people. In fact, a tenant in one of my homes where there was a gas leak at age sixty-five was having severe headaches and throwing up because of gas leaks that the company did not find, though a private gas person came in immediately and knew there was a gas leak. There is also the issue of the danger to health where gas is being extracted. The people in areas like Pennsylvania are trapped, being unable to sell their homes to get enough money to move elsewhere. And one only has to go there to see how the effects of fracking fluids are being pumped, being pumped underground, are putting pressure on the land and causing earth tremors, which have damaged homes and businesses. So in addition to the negative aspects of burning fossil fuels, there are the dangers to people and their property. These are among the reasons the CLCPA was passed, and those reasons are no less important today than when they were put into the law at the time it was passed. This energy plan discussed research into alternative sources of energy, but makes few inroads into increasing the use of renewable energy technology that exists today, not to mention the rapidly developing technologies in capturing renewable power and storing it. All of the above energy sources have negative impacts on people and the planet. The emphasis of the plan should concentrate on those that have the least negative impacts. In other words, those that do the least harm. And it should have--
I want to thank you very much for your comment, and we're going to move on.
Okay, you definitely will get more from me, thank you.
Thank you. Emily Dwyer. David Grubin. Mr. Grubin?
Yes. Hi, thank you. Yeah, hi. From New York. And I very much support the draft energy plan, the call to accelerate renewable energy projects. I think it, it needs to be in accordance with the Climate Act and the scoping plan, as everybody has said. And there's no time to waste. We've got to start getting projects under construction. Which, which brings me to the Shepherd's Run project, because it's a very good example of something that's been delayed for many, many years. And it's, it's a very, very sensitive issue, not only in Copake, but in all over, all over New York State, all over the country. It's very complicated for people to see change coming about. And what, what happens is that well-funded groups come in and they start spreading misinformation. And you heard some of it, about Shepherd's Run. Shepherd's Run isn't going to pollute the water. It's not going to endanger schoolchildren. It's not going to reduce valuable farmland. In fact, there's no evidence to support any of these claims. In fact, the funds from leasing Shepherd's Run will allow farming to continue alongside the solar bands. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm hoping that the state is sensitive to these issues all over rural New York and, and helps to, to get the, the word out, to get the evidence out, and to help communities come to terms with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Dan Haas.
Hi, my name is Dan Haas. I'm from Copake as well. I have to say, I've learned a lot from listening to this, this podcast, this webinar. And I am co-chair with David of Friends of Columbia Solar, which is a group that supports the Shepherd's Run project, mostly because of the urgency of climate change. And I hope you've been listening to the people who feel like the, the current energy plan is not as aggressive or as focused as it needs to be. I think one example of getting things done is going to be to get Shepherd's Run built, which will hopefully happen soon. It's on the verge of getting a, a draft permit. But I just want to echo what David said, that there-- most of the objections to it are baseless, and one in particular is agriculture. I've spoken to the landowner and the farmer. The farmer who works that land is seventy-six years old, and he works seven days a week. And the amount of income that would come from the solar plan would actually enable him to continue farming, which he doesn't know if he'll be able to keep on going much longer otherwise. It's just a small example of a much bigger picture, which is that we need to put these projects on agricultural land, and we need to do it soon, because climate change is an urgent problem, not a, not something that can take, take time to address. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Diana Strablo.
Hello. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I'm Diana Strablo. I live in Serenac Lake, New York, and I am a volunteer with the Sierra Club. This draft state energy plan does not meet the greenhouse gas emission reductions legally mandated in the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, and therefore it needs to go back to the drawing board. The Climate Action Council spent two years drafting a plan to meet the mandates with the CAP, an invest program being a central component to reducing emissions and core to funding alternatives. CAP and Invest needs to be part of the mechanism to meet the CLCPA mandates. We need no more investing in the expansion of methane gas infrastructure. This must include denial of the Nessie Pipeline, revision of the obligation-to-serv gas, and the repeal of the one-hundred-foot rule. Instead, we need investments in home energy ramped up. We need efficiency, heat pumps, geothermal, and thermal energy networks. Long-term utility gas plans are being approved by the state, and they are failing to set and require emission reductions. This plan needs to be revised to give a clear vision for the decarbonizing of the gas system. Climate catastrophes will not wait another ten years. Now more than ever, in the face of federal rollbacks, we need New York to get serious and double down to meet our mandates. Please give us hope that we are not continuing to barrel down a path of unmitigated climate catastrophe. We need New York to be the leader they claimed to be in 2019 with the passage of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexander Pitts.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, members of the board. My name is Alexander Pitts. I'm currently a sophomore at Hamilton College in Clinton, New York. I'm studying environmental studies and government, and I am a native to Western New York. While looking through the energy plan, I was both happy and dismayed. I'm well aware of the need for haste in our energy transition. We face growing climate effects with each passing day. And even as one of the most climate-resilient states in the U.S., we must focus on saving our planet through decarbonization. At the same time, I saw no mention throughout the plan of the extractive nature of the production of renewables. There were two subsections that I could find devoted to some form of climate justice, and yet neither of them mentioned anything about the exploitative nature of lithium mining, nor cobalt mining, nor uranium mining. They mention the justice-- they do not mention the justice implications of outsourcing our labor for the development of these zero-carbon energy sources. With my comments, I simply want to ask a question about our transition goals in the state of New York. Do we care about a just transition, or are we only transitioning? Are we willing to sacrifice the lives of workers abroad to reduce our carbon emissions? Or could we simply add more regulations to our energy development? Workers in Congo, Chile, and Kazakhstan do not deserve the disproportionate health and social impacts associated with the mining of cobalt, lithium, and uranium, respectively. While we must pursue these technologies, it is of the utmost importance that we do not forget that these systems are exploitative and are hurting these communities abroad. Please take this into account when you revise the current draft of the energy plan, and please pursue any regulation on the, the production of lithium-ion batteries as a result of solar and wind expansion, along with the expansion of nuclear power, because the minerals and resources required for their creation hurts the communities by which they come. I appreciate you listening. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Lisa Marshall.
Yes, good evening. Hi, my name's Lisa Marshall. I am the organizing and advocacy director with New Yorkers for Clean Power. And the main part of my job is lead organizer for the Renewable Heat Now campaign. I want to first address the comments that are the part of the preview of these hearings about energy affordability in New York. They are quite misleading when Carl Maz says we have low energy costs on average that really take, does not take into account that many, many New Yorkers live in New York City and don't own a car and live, you know, many people in a small apartment. That doesn't make our energy affordable. In fact, when it comes to low-income New Yorkers, we are one of the most energy-burdened states in the country, only behind states like Tennessee, Alabama, Mississippi, and West Virginia. That is not a good record, and that is something we really need to address, and we should really be honest about it. New Yorkers living upstate have some of the highest energy costs, like myself. I live in Schuman County in a large, old house, and as do many people who are really struggling with their energy bills. Okay, second, I want to talk about a commitment that New York State has made. We are part of the multi-state action plan to accelerate heat pump adoption in buildings. Just today, or yesterday, Washington State joined nine other states, including New York and DC, on this commitment that we have signed up for. And our state energy plan needs to reflect and describe in detail how we're going to meet these commitments to these other states, where we are actually falling behind forward-looking states. The strategies that we have committed to include expanding incentive programs for weatherization and upgrading equipment. We are falling behind on that. We're just cutting the Empower Plus funding dramatically for the next couple of years. That is something we cannot afford to do. Let's think about those low-income New Yorkers who are so energy-burdened we just talked about. Second, directly--
Ms. Marshall, Ms. Marshall, I want to thank you for your comment. Your time has expired. If you'd like to submit the rest of your comment in writing, please use the email that is on your screen. I'm going to move on to Sarah Traberman.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Traberman, and I live in Crayerville in Columbia County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. New York's energy plan won't work, and it's costing New Yorkers. The so-called "energy transition" has led to skyrocketing costs for New York citizens whose electric bills are 54% higher than the national average. And the plan calls for electrifying everything, so there's no end in sight of rising costs for residents, farms, and businesses. Hundreds of square miles of farmland and nature in upstate and western New York have been displaced by sprawling solar and wind projects, which are intermittent and weather-dependent. which are intermittent and weather-dependent, and will soon create massive problems for our landfills, including in my hometown by Hecate Energy Shepherd's Run. If ever a permit should be denied, this is the poster child for a denial. The project is to be built on high-quality farmland in the middle of the Teconic Creek watershed, which supplies 100% of the water for the city of Hudson. It's adjacent to the Teconic schools, attended by 1,400 students. And I'll note, there's no evacuation plan in case of fire. 16 local laws are being violated. Five cultural resources will be adversely impacted. Trees will be clear-cut. And oh, by the way, the developer is allegedly insolvent. The way forward for New York is clearly to focus on nuclear and other dispatchable forms of energy that are available 24/7 to meet our future needs. Yet the planning board is still living in yesterday's dream world at the expense of people living in this state. How will New York keep the lights and heat on if we continue down this foolish path without a drastic change? A net-zero economy based on wind and solar is physically impossible and threatens an energy crisis to which most New Yorkers will be unable to adapt. You need to pause this unworkable energy transition and start over with realistic assumptions and a true feasibility and cost analysis. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. Lindsay LeBract?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Lindsay LeBract, and I am a homeowner, voter, in the town of Kopeck, and also a taxpayer. And since I would say the '60s, I've always done my best to try to not use as much power and fuels as I possibly could. But this plan is wrong, and we only have one chance to get it right. I may not be a scientist, but I know what's right, and I know what's wrong. And the project that we've been talking about a lot here is the Hecate Project at Shepherd's Run. Right out of the box, these people were deceiving and trying to pull the, excuse the pun, wool over our eyes. The problem that I have is in what you're having them do or the guidelines. There is no requirement to have an evacuation plan for our regional school. That's 1,400 students plus-- Oh, God, sorry. It's just, this is just the wrong place, okay? We're mandated to have electric buses, and we're a rural community. If we have to evacuate these students, their buses aren't going to be recharged enough to be able to get them out of the area. We have volunteer firemen who are wonderful. But as we've seen in Else Place in Columbia County, all, when there has been fires for solar, the fire department generally just sits and waits for somebody from the electric company to come around. When you're taking a look at what we need to do for the future, we really need to take a look at the adjoining neighborhoods and what is going to be ruined. And I really hope you can help us in any way so that OREs does not give Hecate, a Chicago-based company, which is financially insolvent, a permit. We need to do it right the first time, and--
Thank you, Ms. LeBract. I appreciate your comment. We're going to move on, and if you'd like to submit the rest of it in writing, please do so. Misalini, Misalino Silva?
Yes, hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Misalino Silva from Vision Long Island. Our mission is to bring Long Island together to promote more livable, economically sustainable, and environmentally responsible growth through smart growth principles. I work with small businesses all across Long Island in low- and moderate-income communities. Business owners cannot afford one more bill or rate increase. I support all the above approach written in the plan that supports all forms of energy, including natural gas. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. Harry Hussey?
Hi, my name's Harry Hussey. I am a member of Friends of Columbia Solar. Again, we're talking about the Hecate Shepherd's Run project. I'm sorry that we've sort of commandeered this whole thing, but the opposition sensible solar has a very well-funded and well-organized infrastructure that tends to get a lot of people on and tends to get people out there talking about this thing. And I really question some of their claims. Like, do we have, is there an evacuation plan for the school? It's a school. I would hope there's an evacuation plan already. So the whole watershed thing has been dealt with and shown to be a red herring. It's not going to affect the water any more than the cows defecating in the water, as it is now, would. It's, yeah, it isn't going to look great. It's not going to be, you know, it's not pretty, and I feel bad for the people who live next door. But it, we need to do this. We, you know, we have a climate crisis. We can't sit around. And, you know, we live in Columbia County. We're living in one of the most beautiful areas in the world. If you don't like the view, drive five minutes. It's going to be another view. We're lousy with views. So I really do hope that we can put this behind us and get this Shepherd's Run plan approved and built. That's all. Thanks for listening. Talk to you later.
Thank you for your comment. Malak Nasradeen?
Hi, good evening. I'm Malak Nasradeen, Senior Utility Regulatory Policy Manager for New York at the Building Decarbonization Coalition. Thanks for the chance to provide comments this evening on the draft plan. You know, I want to start by recognizing the significant work that's gone into this process so far and its importance in charting New York's climate future. As my colleague Allison testified at the Brooklyn hearing, "We urge the board to elevate a neighborhood-scale approach to building decarbonization to enhance the speed, equity, and scale of the energy transition." To build on those comments, we want to highlight additional recommendations on the gas system chapter. So as we already know, New York cannot meet the requirements of the climate law without significant emissions cuts from buildings, which means reducing our reliance on fossil fuels. However, utilities continue to pour billions of dollars into gas infrastructure, even though every new mile of pipe will cost about $60,000 to each household and locks us into more future stranded assets. The draft plan correctly identifies that as more households electrify and move away from gas, the cost of maintaining gas pipelines will fall on fewer and fewer customers, leading to higher and higher energy costs. In fact, utilities' own projections show even a modest 2% annual decline in gas customers could drive delivery costs four times higher by 2040 and seven times higher by 2050. Low-income families, who have the least ability to switch off of gas, are going to be left carrying the heaviest burden. The gas system must be reined in. This plan unfortunately falls short on that, and we urge the planning board to recommend enforceable emissions reduction targets for the building sector, as had been noted in the adopted scope for the energy plan, and direct a managed downsizing of the gas system. That's how we can protect households from being left behind and avoid unnecessary infrastructure investments. Thank you, and we look forward to submitting our written comments next week.
Thank you for your comment. Gabrielle Corso?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I agree to regret that we need to address global warming logically. But however, this New York State plan misses the mark. For example, it lacks depth on geothermal technology, you know? Coincidentally, I haven't seen an investor prospectus on geothermal, probably because it's not profitable, like I have on these battery-energy storage facilities, highlighting, you know, double-digit returns. Additionally, this plan would cost an increase in the cost of electric. I think as someone said, he said that, you know, some of these green technologies have a lower cost per kilowatt hour. But what happens when you take those historical subsidies away? The cost is going to increase. The demand of electric is going to increase, so the cost is going to increase. I work for a manufacturer, aerospace and defense here on Long Island. Our bill is already four times as high compared to the Carolinas, which has nuclear-supported electricity. If the cost goes any higher, we're going to close up shop and move the facility down to the Carolinas, where it's cost-effective. The burden to subsidize this, you know, with the lack of federal subsidies is going to increase the shift to us, the New York State taxpayers, in the form of taxes. Pilots given to these technologies that are going to take away from the schools and the overall cost of electrics. It's going to hurt New York State residents. The lack of choice will hurt New York State residents. Additionally, New York State has taken away the ability for the local towns to have influence over these sites, such as Long Island lithium-ion battery technologies. They've taken away our ability to decide or have the residents decide where these are located. Right now, there's one located within a mile of about six elementary and middle schools. This is a dangerous technology, and we shouldn't be rolling out to the capacity that the plan has designed.
Very much for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Daniel Morrissey?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, Chair Harris, State Energy Planning Board members and members of the public. My name is Daniel Morrissey, and I am Director of Sustainability at TAP Inc., the community design center of the Capital Region, a nonprofit architecture, planning, and sustainability firm in downtown Troy for 56 years. As a subject matter expert, well-versed in over a dozen NYSERDA programs, I advise small and mid-sized businesses across the clean energy ecosystem statewide, from residents to original equipment manufacturers to community-based workforce development organizations to NYSERDA-qualified contractors. What people want is a government they can trust, one that makes the clean energy transition as easy as possible. As you know, some do not want to change. But for those who do, for those who know how important it is to lead on climate issues, it should be simple to become an early adopter or a clean energy business owner. As for those who just want to be more comfortable and healthy, state-funded residential energy efficiency programs should be as easy to navigate as possible and make a visible difference in their lives. Instead, they meet worsening barriers and frustration along the way. The already-challenged Empower Plus program comes to mind as it faces funding cuts upwards of 60%. Funding of LMI programs must track with CLCPA implementation, else we risk being out of compliance with the law's mandate for 35% of benefits to impact disadvantaged communities with a goal of 40%. Deep decarbonization of our building stock is the best investment in our future, period. Yet, the co-benefits for health, comfort, and resilience are priceless. In a near future of storms fueled by a warmer climate, the resilience benefits of equitable electrification cannot be overstated. By contrast, nuclear energy is the most expensive energy, form of energy, by far. Please stay away from nuclear and invest in the people. Thank you.
Norm Miller?
Hello. Hey, hi, everyone. My name is Norm Miller. I am a CUNY City Tech student, where the last meeting was heard nearly, where we had a last meeting nearly two weeks ago. And I currently serve on the Nightbreak Student Board of Directors. I'm here to say that students are the future, and we know the future of New York is clean energy. We need the state to invest in renewable energy, like the climate law that demands not delay, delay, delay. We don't have times, we don't have times for delay. Every delay in reducing emissions, building decarbonization, and transitioning to a clean energy economy is bad for New Yorkers. Students and our families feel the affordability crisis paying for schools', transportation, and utility bills that continue to rise. We can't afford an energy plan that keeps us locked into dirty, expensive fossil fuels. It's crazy that the governor is even considering to approve, is even, sorry, is even considering to approving the Williams Nessie Pipeline, when it's been rejected several times before for being too dangerous. It's crazy that several other fossil fuel projects are being considered across the state. New York needs to reject all new fossil fuel infrastructure and give us all clean energy for a clear path forward into renewable future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Pauline Beam? Maya Baird? Ms. Baird?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Maya Baird. I go to, I go to the New York City Middle School, and I'm 11 years old. Sorry. I was surprised upon reading the energy plan fact sheet to see that most of primary energy is lost in conversion before it can be used. I was less surprised to see that most of the lost energy is fossil fuels. If we cut down on fossil fuels, we cut down on wasted energy and help the environment. I know that some people may find changing to cleaner energy expensive. So I suggest the state energy plan supports setting aside more money to help people buy solar panels and heat pumps for their houses. We need to move away from fossil fuels and to clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Luke Colavito? Mila Malik? No, we'll check back. Daniel Archstatter?
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can.
Can you come back to me because I'm in transit? I will be stationary in five minutes.
I'm going to go through the list of anyone who had registered when we get to the end. Absolutely. Daniel Archstatter? Margot Thompson? Ms. Thompson? Again, we'll come back. Catherine Kirby? I know it's getting late for some folks. But please be sure to submit your comments in writing, if that's your preference. Joshua Pattinson? Deborah Herden?
Joshua here.
Hi, Joshua.
I would like to say that I'm with Pipeliners Local Union 798, and I support this plan. It's gonna help the grid. It's going to create 60,000 jobs over the next 15 years. Many of them good-paying union jobs, the skilled craftsmen. And it's going to help lower the cost to heat homes and power businesses. And it's a, it's a good balanced energy policy. And I'd like to see PLAs put into place on many of these projects. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Deborah Herden? Liz Fesser?
Hello, yes, I'm sorry. I think I gave a confusing message. I'm able to speak if there's still time.
And I'm so sorry, but who are you?
I'm Deborah.
Okay, Deborah Herden, great.
Yes. I'm a nurse, and I live in Brooklyn, New York. I'm a local Sierra Club volunteer. I believe we need to forge ahead with non-carbon-producing energy, like wind and solar, and eventually leave behind fossil fuels. As a result of fossil fuel-based energy and pollution, our temperatures are rising. Variable weather patterns are occurring, such as extreme temperatures, both heat and cold, rises in sea level from melting snow and ice, changes in precipitation resulting in flooding and drought, more intense hurricanes and storms, wildflowers, wildfires, as well as poor air quality in New York. Health impacts associated with these changes include increases in infectious diseases, extreme weather event-related injuries and deaths, reductions in food supply and displacement populations as a result of increases in flooding and drought. There are also consequences associated with air quality deterioration resulting from burning fossil fuels, coal combustion, and increasing levels of pollutants, such as ground-level ozone and particulate such as ground-level ozone and particulate matter. Um, we know that certain populations are extremely vulnerable, vulnerable to health impacts from these changes, including children, the elderly, communities of color, low in, income populations, and those with chronic health conditions. Uh, additionally, with the la- the range of climate regions across our state, um, these changes pose variable risks throughout um New York. Please don't let billionaires in the oil and gas industries undermine our important and expert-driven state CLCPA policy. New York must um, uh, must primarily protect human and animal health. I urge you to cancel the faulty draft of the energy plan and become the leader in clean energy. Thank you.
You for your comment. Liz Fesser. Len Luca.
Hi, my name is Len Luca from Binghamton. I support renewables and New Yorkers for Clean Power. Dear Energy Planning Board members, thank you for listening to us. I ask you to be bold in maintaining CLCPA commitments and the careful research invested in the scoping plan. The policies you adopt now will determine whether working families, seniors on fixed incomes, and low and middle-income households can afford comfortable heating in winter and cooling in summer. Too many New Yorkers today must choose between paying energy bills and covering essential needs such as food or medication, a situation that must change. The state energy plan should place energy affordability as its, at its core. By affordability, I mean directing agencies to devise a strategy that caps energy costs at no more than six percent of household income. Fully fund programs such as Empower Plus, the Energy Affordability Program, and green affordable pre-electrification, and provide zero or low-interest loans for home retrofits along with reduced electricity rates for newly electrified buildings. We must also curb reliance on methane, set enforceable emission limits for the gas system, and revise the gas utility service obligation to eliminate subsidies for new gas connections, aligning with the scoping plan's target of an eighty-five percent reduction in building emissions. Invest aggressively in clean energy pro- projects with permitting and financing structures that allow their adoption. These investments will yield long-term benefits to all New Yorkers. Finally, again, honor the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Its roadmap, built on extensive expert analysis and public input, should guide the twenty-twenty-five state energy plan. New Yorkers are counting on your bold, courageous action to do more faster. I hope these hearings confirm for you that you have public support to honor the scoping plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Elizabeth Pereba.
My name is Elizabeth Pereba, and I have a home in New Lebanon, New York. But I come from a long line of thrifty Connecticut Yankee farmers, true conservatives who are generally not in favor of big government, and certainly big government plans. But tonight I find myself agreeing with Len urging you to make a bold government plan. This cup, this plan is not yet bold enough. Many people agree and can prove that climate change is costing us money. Comptroller DiNapoli has said that it poses significant financial, financial risks to investments in local governments because of storms, flooding, and droughts. By twenty fifty, climate change infrastructure costs could reach ten billion dollars annually just in New York State. Clearly, failing to pay for measures to lessen climate chaos would be penny-wise and pound foolish. The scoping plan's cap and invest program would provide those prevention pennies to the tune of about five billion dollars a year. Implementing it would make sense, but where is this plan in your current plan? I understand that may, you may not want to take on the bold leadership goal that we would like you to take on. But I can't understand ignoring the obvious need to raise money in order to save money, which you are doing by pulling back from cap and invest. As poor Richard would say in The Almanac, "A stitch in time saves nine." Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. Jacqueline Dreschler.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Excellent. So my name is Jacqueline Dreschler. I live in Rockland County, New York, and I'm with the Alliance for Nuclear Free New York. I'd like to say that, you know, our energy bills are way too high, and if nuclear energy is added into this energy mix, we can all watch our energy bills explode. From start to finish, the production of nuclear energy is harmful, the uranium, plutonium, the radioactive emissions into our air and water, and the waste. There is nowhere for the incredibly dangerous waste to be stored safely. The uranium that will be mined and transported harms the communities where it is mined, which is out of state. This should be a big red flag to New York State. New York State must invest in true renewable energies, not be giving zex for nuclear energy. This, this plan actually, you know, as far as I'm concerned, really needs to go back to the drawing board. Um, it must not include nuclear power. What we need is true renewable energy and open transmission. As far as I can understand, we actually have enough energy. We are just not transmitting it. So as far as I feel, this state energy plan is unacceptable. Thank you very much for your time and for holding these hearings.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to go back over. There are a couple of um people who had registered to speak who have been able to join us. Um, Pramila Malik.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you for considering this comment. My name is Pramila Malik, and I'm the Chair of Protect Orange County. In twenty seventeen, when the state made the decision to close Indian Point, the state legislature was told that Indian Point's carbon-free power would be replaced by renewable energy and transmission line upgrades. However, what was kept hidden from the public and legislators was that Indian Point's carbon-free power was not only to be replaced by three gas-fired plants, but was specifically because of a quid pro quo bribery scheme created by Competitive Power Ventures, which now operates its gas plant in Orange County despite two criminal convictions and never having been issued a federal Clean Air Act permit. Now, I was at the criminal trial, and according to evidence and the testimony of the government witness Todd Howe, the real purpose of the bribery scheme was to shape New York's energy policy. As a result, downstate New York's greenhouse gas emissions increased by twenty-eight percent and is now ninety-five percent powered by fossil fuels. So many of the challenges that you have described are because of the outcome of that bribery scheme. Now, New York City is the second-largest consumer of power in the world. So this improper influence on our state's energy plan has both local and global impacts. So I would ask you to, one, not reward corruption. Two, exercise, exorcise the state's energy plan from this wrong trajectory. Three, eliminate CPV from consideration of the state's near-term energy plan. Um, they are not eligible for an air permit, and all residents of Orange County continue to demand its shutdown. Four, support all forms of carbon-free power in downstate New York. Five, advance the goals of the CLCPA. Six, require that all proposed data centers and large power consumers provision independent carbon-free power outside of the grid. If the total-
And I thank you for your, I want to thank you for your comment. If you'd like to submit the-
One second.
Like to submit, I'm sorry, if you'd like to submit the rest of it in writing, please do. Um, I'm going to go on to Margot Thompson. All right, um, I am going to go through the list of pre-registered speakers who were not able to be with us um earlier. Um, and on the chance that they have come in or that they are on someone else's computer, uh, want to make sure that they get their chance. So Sarah Alsharif. Beth Jacobs. Jerome Tyler DeVries. Denise Katzman. Ms. Katzman. Ms. Katzman, if you, if you do wish to speak, would you just let us know in the um chat? Please, or in the Q and A. Um, Philip Rose. F. Scott Sikora. Anne Swayze. Hamonshu Ahuga. Nivo Rovedo. Gabrielle Ricchio. Andrew Foster. Anne Marie Ruggles. Charles Nicastro. Lucille Gianovola. Sean Ryan. Charles Thomas. Sarah Stevens. Darcy Sax. Donald Hughes. Aaron Boyd. Dorinda Darden. Chris Sagas. Gerard Weir. Zachary Cunningham. Catherine Do. Santosh Nandabalan. Paula Iacano. Michael McGlynn. Kay Lustig. Ann Robb. Mark Murray. Allison Adams Weinberg. Brandon Lantin. Margaret Riley. Matthew Pilkington. Emily Dwyer. Pauline Beam. Luke Colavito. Daniel Archstatter. Catherine Kirby. And Liz Fesser. And again, if you've decided that you don't wish to speak, but you would like to submit your comment in writing, uh, please use the email address that is on the screen. Um, I am going to pass the hearing over to Carl Moss.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm sorry. Carl, one moment, please. Apparently, we do have somebody who has come in. Just wait one moment.
No problem.
Mikalo Zabroden.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, hi, my name is Mikaelo Zabroden. Uh, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I stand with Pipeliners Local Union seven ninety-eight in providing this comment on proposed updates to the twenty-twenty-five New York State Draft Energy Plan. I am encouraged to see that the plan i- in its revised state prioritizes a balanced energy system, supporting economic growth, and a positive long-term job outlook for skilled industry craftsmen. I'm also pleased to see that the state energy plan not only focuses on supporting clean energy, it puts emphasis on creating good-paying construction jobs and strengthening New York's economy. Below are more uh outlined reasons why I support the approval of the draft plan. Job creation. The updated plan pro- projects, more than sixty thousand new jobs being created over the next fifteen years, with the construction industry projecting a sixty percent growth during this time. Opening doors for securing jobs for the local union workforce. This ensures safety, quality, and fair wages, and is an a measurably significant benefit to craftsmen in New York State and the surrounding region. Um, I support embedding strong labor standards and project labor agreement within the plan, so when applicable, these jobs remain local, union, and high-quality. A clean energy future must be built by skilled, well-trained workers, and that means union labor. An industry craftsman will not be the only ones to benefit from this investment. In infrastructure projects will ripple throughout impacted communities, supporting small businesses and public services. The twenty-twenty-five state draft energy plan outlines clear solutions that the, that address the concerns most important to New York residents and workers. This includes support for responsible energy pos- uh policy that protects access to reliable and affordable energy while generating critical economic activity and good jobs for American craftsmen for years to come. Thank you for considering this comment as you shape the future of this great state.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Moss, I'm going to hand things over to you now.
Okay, last call. All right, um, so we will now close today's hearing. Um, it's been really uh important for the board to hear from all of you. We've taken careful notes. Um, I also do want to thank, because it's our last hearing, the, the incredible staff um who have been working on this, on these hearings, from the ASL interpreters um, to our webinar tech support. Um, it's really been an amazing show of force and glad that we've been able to contribute as a team. And on behalf of the State Energy Planning Board, I want to thank all our attendees and commentators. We appreciate all the input you've shared today. And of course, we'll be considering it all as we develop our final plan. And then as a reminder, written comments are being accepted through October sixth. And um you can submit these through the online form or by email or by postal mail um as shown on the slides, and maybe we can pull up that last slide for those who are still on. Uh, but please do go to the energy plan website, um, energyplan新york.gov, get involved and comment. And with that, I want to thank you all, and we will end this last public hearing. Have a great night.